It's five o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Smith is absent. Commissioner Kerth.
Here.
Thank you.
Our first item on the agenda is going to be the invocation led by Commissioner Wilson and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Huber.
Your Lord, as we gather to make decisions for our community, those in judgment as we consider it for us, and that we act in accordance with what is our community and our fellow citizens.
If I can repeat with me. Public.
The first two items on the agenda are a public hearings, Agenda Item One and Agenda Item Two, and they will be continued to February 12th. However, we will take any testimony. If anyone wishes to speak, please fill out one of these cards and give it to the secretary. Public hearing number one.
I approve a minute.
Oh, excuse me. Minutes. Minutes, please. Thank you.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 11th, 2013.
I just got one minor change under roll call for present. Commissioner Smith arrived a few minutes late. So, just with that change, and I'll go ahead and second.
I'll amend that motion with that change.
I'll go ahead and second.
Agenda item number one.
Commissioners staff recommends a continuance to the February Planning Commission meeting for this item.
This is a public hearing and on the Civic Center Sustainability Plan, and I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to testify at this time. Then I will, if there's no response, I will close the public, I will continue the public hearing to February the 12th, 1914, 2014. Excuse me. You agree? Agenda item number two is also to be continued. It's regarding a solar power generation plan. And I will open the public hearing, ask if anyone wishes to testify on this item. There being no response, I will continue this item to February 12th, 2014. Agenda item number three.
Yes, Commissioners, Agenda item number three is PLN 13021. It's a site plan and conditional use permit to build a new Circle K convenience store, gas station, and car wash, and a conditional use permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine within 300 feet of a residence within a residential district, and a parcel map to allow for the creation of three parcels from one existing parcel, and a variance to allow for the sale of single-serve alcoholic beverages. And it's located at the southwest corner of Mojave Drive and Village Drive. Staff has several issues with the site plan and CUP, including the suspension of full improvements along Mojave Drive, single-serve alcohol sales, a proposed poll sign, and Phase Two approval. However, staff has conditioned all of these items to meet Title 16 and recommends approval of the site plan, conditional use permit, and parcel map as conditioned. However, staff recommends the commission deny the variance for single-serve alcohol.
Thank you very much. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone wishes to speak to Agenda Item Number Three. I do have two cards. One is Mr. Alex Cuevas. Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission and staff. My name is Rhona Druve. I am the Development Manager for the West Coast for Circle K Stores, and with me today I actually have our Regional Operations Director who manages all the sites in this region, and our architect Alex Cuevas for any questions that may come up later regarding our project. To begin, I want to say that, you know, we've worked very hard on this project in getting it to where it is today. We've been negotiating this and working on the site plan for over a year now. And, you know, historically, if you're familiar with Circle K, we do very well in Victorville. It, I have no doubts that this new prototype, it's a 4,500 square foot store, it'd be the first that you'd see in this area, is state-of-the-art with, you know, eight MPDs and a car wash. And so, it will definitely add value to Mojave Drive. I truly believe that this corner is going to be a great corner with its proximity to the 15 freeway, but there were quite a bit of challenges with this site. As you can see, the drainage channel just bisects the site, and I gave our senior management heartburn over this project because of that, and so we would have to construct a driveway that runs across it, and, you know, that added some costs to our project, which regularly on other projects we would not have. But I got that approved, and, you know, we worked through those issues. Unfortunately, over the past few months, we've been faced with some new items that have come about with the city, and it's changed our projections significantly. And so, I've kind of begun to question whether, you know, what the city's intention may be with new development, and I want to speak and let you know that it's now become a business decision, and it's the bottom-line number that's being affected. The few points I do want to make is, you know, the off-site improvements along Mojave, the dedication is fine, the off-sites are significant detriment to that actual road. I have a site plan that can show, if I can pass that around, that we don't understand why the improvements need to be made today. It will create a bottleneck for those cars driving down that lane and basically hitting the curb on Village. Additionally, you know, the safety issues, you know, we're going to do the work, we're going to be liable for any issues that may come about with that lane. So, you know, we, we also actually looked up a federal case that's being heard in courts in March, and, you know, this is, a taking of that land is unconstitutional, that's what's being heard in March, and so, you know, we're prepared to share that with you as well, the findings with that case. But making us, making this development contingent upon doing those improvements, we just don't see, see where the city is coming from on that matter. So, we hope that, you know, you'll take that comment into consideration. Additionally, the single sales, that ordinance hurts us drastically. About 25% of our sales will be reduced with that singles restriction. We understand the ordinance was passed last summer, but, you know, that puts us at a competitive disadvantage. If you look at the other stores in the area near our site, you know, our site is going to be state-of-the-art, we just don't see how those sites can still have their single sales, and we're being pinpointed because we're in new development. So, you know, we hope that, you know, if we decide to move forward with this project, that if we did move forward to recoup those sales with a liquor license, that Planning Commission would, you know, hopefully support that move if we decided to move forward. Additionally, I think the poll sign, we were looking for a poll sign for the visibility along the 15, and that's being rejected, and, you know, this puts us at a disadvantage again. So, I feel that, you know, these conditions have altered our economics. I went back, I went back and I redid our economics, and as it stood today with our project as it was approved in March, we were at a 13% return. I factored in the off-site improvements and the negative effect of the single sales, our return is now at 7%. I can't move forward. I've spoken to the senior management before this meeting, and I let them know that if Planning Commission rules on behalf of what staff has recommended, we're going to have to walk away from this project, and so, I'm hoping that you would take our comments into consideration, because we want to be here. We do really well here, and I fought for this site, and there were so many challenges with this site, and, you know, our architect and Alex and Dan can attest to that. I mean, we've been working on this for quite some time, so I hope you can see how passionate I am about this, and I don't want to lose it, and I don't want to walk away from it, but in the end, it comes down to the bottom-line number. And where it sits today, if it gets approved as is, we're probably not going to build, and we're going to have to go somewhere else, and we don't want to do that. We really don't. We've worked really hard on this, as you can see. So, I hope that you take my comments into consideration, and I, I hope that, you know, you support development and our development, and we want to build more stores in the city, but, you know, some of these, these are going to be challenges when it comes down to the bottom line, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Cuevas, did you?
Yes, good evening. I just want to add a little bit more about the ultimate right of way. We have no problem dedicating the land. That's not the issue. We're okay dedicating the land to the city if we're forced to do so. The improvement is what we feel it is unsafe and it's not right for us to be doing that kind of work when nothing around that area has been improved. That's something that we feel very strongly about.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to Agenda Item Number Three? Then I'm going to declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to talk just real quick about, about the variance. It is, it's my opinion that, that variances, as a general rule, really speak to the topographical nature of land. The Planning Commission cannot issue a variance because of, you know, maybe somebody doesn't like the use. I'm not getting this from nowhere. It's Government Code 65906 that specifically talks about the fact that a variance is geared for property. Let me give you an example. If there is a property that has a very, very, very sharp slope, and because of that sharp slope, the developer needs to go ahead and tweak the building size or tweak the setback, that is, that is, you know, might be okay for a variance. But specifically, uses are not something upon which variance can be granted. And I'll go ahead and let the, let the Planning Commission deliberate, but I did want to point that out, because it's important to note, but the Planning Commission could go ahead and deliberate first, and, and just in case I did kind of jot down a few findings that I would like to include in the resolution, if that's the way the Planning Commission will go. So, I just wanted to point that out to the Planning Commission before the Planning Commission deliberates.
Questions from?
Well, I have a comment. I guess ask staff if there's any way that a continuance would help or make this a little bit where you could sit down and maybe work something out with the applicant, or it sounds like we're going to do and/or not do is, I mean, if this project goes.
It certainly won't help on the alcohol portion of it, but the engineering portion of it, maybe Brian can explain. She talked about it being their responsibility if they create a dangerous traffic situation, but that the roadway would actually be dedicated and then accepted by the city, so I'm not sure if you have a comment on that.
Yes, I'd like to speak to the road widening. I'm a registered civil engineer and a registered traffic engineer, and in my opinion, the widening would actually enhance the safety of the intersection and the road. It would provide a right turn into Village Drive going south, and also provide for movements in and out of the site by providing an additional lane. Also, this is consistent with our general plan. The general plan shows that Mojave Drive is a super arterial with three lanes in each direction connecting to the interchange, which someday will need to be widened to accommodate future traffic. So, this is consistent with what our own general plan requires.
That addresses the comment about the court case where the court, the city does have the right to ask for this for her. It's on our general plan, it's on our circulation element. We do have the right to ask for it, we do have the right to require it. She's right, you can suspend it, you don't have to do it at this time, but our engineering professional is telling us, no, it would help the safety of it. So, I don't think a continuance would help now on either issue, so.
In addition, the widening of the road is feasible to construct at this time, and I see no reason to, to defer it to a later time. And I'm only speaking to public safety issues. Like, you know, I'm not speaking about any economics, I'm just talking about the requirements of widening the road and the feasibility of constructing it today versus at a later time. But in my opinion, it would actually enhance the safety of the road and the intersection by providing an additional turn lane.
Very much.
I have a question on that same note, Brian. If that turn lane was deferred, okay, and it was stayed just a dedication, what would be the mechanism, what would trigger that dedication to actually be developed in the future typically?
Well, our street construction improvement agreement actually places a lien on the property, and the city can go back at a later time and require the construction of the improvement. If the property owner's not willing to do that at the time, there are two courses of action we could take. We could take a legal enforcement against the property owner, or we could form an assessment district to assess the cost of the improvements. That'd be the mechanism. We've done both in the past, and it can be a relatively difficult process, or it could be a relatively easy one depending on the situation. Thanks.
I'm looking at the signage. I understand the reasoning for the signage based upon the proximity to the interstate. Not sure about the additional six-foot sign and the sign that should be included. Out loud, sorry.
Pleasure.
On that, one more question. On the street widening, I just had a thought, you know, I mean, Brian, you made it clear that according to the city, it's a, it's a safety issue. Whenever I hear that, it makes me very leery to go against a safety issue the next time something happens there. I heard it loud and clear, there was a safety issue, and I went against that. But, in the past in the city, or is there an option, I mean, would this make sense at all with the engineering department to maybe condition that turn lane to be developed at such a time as the property that continues on going farther to the east, the next corner? When that becomes developed, that would be a turn lane, so they would then kind of, kind of match up? Or do you feel that at this time, without that turn lane at that intersection, we have safety issues? As of the date's built?
In my opinion, I believe adding the street widening would enhance the safety of the intersection. On the other hand, I can't honestly say that without the street widening, it would be an unsafe condition. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
I'm not saying that it would be unsafe not doing the street widening at this time, however, I'm saying that I believe it would improve or enhance the safety today, and that it's also, it would be feasible to construct the improvements today if it was required.
Yeah, and my feeling is that, you know, when a new development comes in, it does make sense to do them now, because when are you going to do them? You know? Do we wait? But is there, is there a time in the past that the cities looked at things that would trigger that widening sooner rather than later, not having to go to a bond issue or get into a battle, but say, what if the neighboring property across the way, at such time as they develop, and they have, they have to put theirs? This one would be too, like we've seen in the past sometimes with signals. First one comes in, then the second one triggers it.
Actually, Scott just, Scott just reminded us of discussion that the commissions had. Go ahead.
Oh, just that, I think it was in 2009 that Planning Commission put a policy of when to allow street improvements to be deferred. In this case, since it's new development, the property frontage would need to be improved. That's per the current policy. It doesn't mean that the Planning Commission today couldn't stray from it, but that's what the Planning Commission established at some point that.
It addressed suspensions as well, when, yeah, when.
Yeah, when to suspend, and in this case, it's new development of vacant property, they would require the street improvements.
But to get back to your question, the mechanism that we've used in the past is the street improvement construction agreement, which I mentioned before. The way to enforce that, if the property owner wouldn't be willing to, at such time we wanted to, require the improvements, would be through an assessment district or a legal action. If we required the adjacent property to widen the road in front of their property, and in addition widen off-site, that would be an overexaction, in my opinion, on that property to the, to the east, towards the interchange. That could be the trigger for us to do the widening later, but I don't see how we could put that requirement on that other property to do all the widening.
Oh, no, no, it wouldn't be on the other property, and I would say at such time as the property to the east, which is almost kind of undeveloped at this point. I see that possibly being developed as a major core to the same reason that Circle K is coming into that intersection, maybe in the near future, maybe in this cycle. And when that one develops, they're going to have the same kind of condition to put in that extra turn lane coming, you know, put in that extra lane to get out or whatever's required, that third lane there, and they may ask for that to be suspended as well, which would be very easy for the city to say, no, as a matter of fact, your neighbor had a suspension until yours comes in. Now they both come in, and it makes sense. I don't know if that makes sense to engineering department, though.
And that, that would be possible, and that scenario has happened before with other projects. It, that, that's one option.
Because I don't, I don't like, you know, just putting something out perpetual that says, hey, whenever the city feels like it. I like seeing, you know, a certain activity happen, and then everyone must comply. I don't know if that would be sufficient to the applicant. I don't know what the other commissioners think of that.
Kind of like to, kind of like to know, like, and Brian has kind of said, as far as safety, it won't make it any worse, and that could be a trigger. And I would kind of like to hear if, if that's something the applicant. Is the, is it closed? Okay.
Now I'll reopen the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, our intention is we were going to dedicate the land and hope that our development will trigger more development along that street. I mean, this, this is only going to be a positive for the area, and so, we've, we know that eventually, when development happens to the east, to the west, that these improvements make sense. But today, we just don't see it, and in the end, it's, it's the bottom-line number, but, you know, if there's some way that we can work something out, I think that's progress for us. I, I just see it as something we have to do in the future.
Yes, okay.
Would you agree to a continuance of this item until such time as, as you could meet with the, the engineer and staff?
Well, I think, I think I'd like to see which way we go, because we are, one, under contract, and two, you know, it's something I have to take back to upper management, right? Because it comes down to, to the bottom line, and so, I'd like to see where we stand and see if we can amend the CUP later down the line, and, you know, if there's a way to work this out.
In that case, if I made a motion on this, Brian, if I made a change to that condition as general as I just said it, is that going to be enough teeth for you, such as, you know, okay, fine, when that other property develops, it would trigger this, but there may be something else that I'm missing.
Well, there, there are findings that the Planning Commission needs to make in order to suspend improvements, yes.
Yeah, that it's not injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare is the main finding. Just keep in mind, if you were to. Just keep in mind, if you were to suspend him, you'd have a new development with not any curb, gutter, sidewalk. So there's certain levels to that. Do you suspend the sidewalk? Do you suspend the curb and gutter? Do you suspend...
That's what I'm talking about, the details of it. I would not be in favor of just leaving it dirt or just some landscaping. There would need to be curb, gutter, and everything else we see in this city.
And just to clarify, the property to the east is already developed. It's an older auto repair shop. And the current policy right now by the planning commission for street improvements would be not to suspend a new development on vacant property. Like I said, it's not that you can't stray from that, but you would be kind of setting a new precedent for new development. So I want you to understand that.
And to your point about that, then, when that developer comes in to develop that property, then saying both of them do it, it would seem like he would then have an argument as well to say, oh, well, you didn't do it for them, and I don't think the traffic justifies it for me either, so therefore I want a suspension as well. And it could work both ways against you.
Yeah, where that one could come back and say, well, then, I don't want it to develop until the third one. And the third one would say the fourth one. But I mean, at a certain point, I mean, that is a freeway overpass right there, you know? And I do think those probably three corners may develop out with newer product cycle. If I was to make that motion, I still don't know how I would word the condition to protect engineering.
If you were to make that motion, at the least, if they deferred the street widening, at the least, they would need to install a sidewalk along the standard sidewalk along the curb and gutter, the existing curb and gutter, because there is existing sidewalk, but it doesn't meet the standard commercial width. They would need to be, they would have to be required to install, off the top of my head, I don't know if a street light would fall within that frontage or not. That's a standard condition. If it does, they would need to, you know, install that and possibly fire hydrants, et cetera. The typical improvements that go behind the curb and gutter would need to be installed. And then the deferment would be for everything that would be new, would be the street widening, curb and gutter, sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera. That's part of our standard improvement requirement. And the vehicle is normally a street improvement construction agreement. But all that is standard language that we use when we defer the improvements on a street widening.
Right.
Ms. Chair, I'm sorry, did you close the public hearing? I don't know if I heard it after the applicant spoke. Okay. All right. Then it's still open then?
Oh, yes, it's still open.
Sorry.
That was our intention from the very beginning. Our plans show the improvements that we're doing far as the sidewalk, that we're making the landscaping a lot bigger for the future, for whenever that portion was widened. So that it is our intention to, if we have to move a fire hydrant, if we have to put a light, we will do so. That is part of our, is our intention. The only thing that we didn't want to do was the actual improvements in winding the curb and gutter and have to relocate the traffic signal, and also there is a storm drain that needs to be moved back. That was the only thing that we were fighting for.
Questions of the applicants? And I'm going to close this public hearing again. It's getting more and more complicated than what we, not just the street, talking about a whole bunch of other things. I would think that, talk to the staff more about it or something, but I don't think that... If they're objecting to more than just the street wide.
Yeah, I'm...
Staff has known about those issues from the start, so I don't know what we're going to work out. I think she's right. I think we're waiting for your direction to tell us whether we're working on anything or we have our recommendations, they have their referrals. We need your direction.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Chair, members of the commission, if I could go ahead and just kind of make a few comments actually prior to any motion. First of all, if the planning commission were to accept staff's recommendation on all five items, the environmental assessment, the site plan, the CUP, the parcel map, and the variance, I would like the motion maker to please include that the planning commission take the following actions based on the findings in the resolution, the findings in the staff report, the findings made by staff, and the, such as Mr. Gangler's speaking about safety, safety feasibility, and Mr. Webb's speaking about maybe past policies. If the planning commission were to, as I said, accept staff's recommendation, and also findings made by the commission. In addition to that, specifically with the variance for resolution number P-14-013, I would like to include some of the findings be beefed up. If I could read those in the record, and if the planning commission agrees with me to make the motion based upon those additional beefed-up findings. May I read those into the record as I kind of have them? Okay. In the one, on page 39, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, fourth whereas. It would say, whereas the planning commission finds that the proposed sale of single-serve alcoholic beverages does not meet the findings listed in section 16-3.03.050 of the Victorfil Municipal Code as listed below, A, that there are exceptional circumstances applicable to the property involved or to the intended use which do not generally apply to other property in the same district because, this is where I'm adding, because there is no physical size, shape, or topographical issues which deprive such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in, actually enjoyed by other properties, period. And again, I'm kind of taking this language from 65906. In addition to that, B, that the result would not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to the property in the vicinity because people consume, because people are more likely to consume the single beverages immediately and possibly encourage drunk driving. And I would actually like to add, D as in David, a variance cannot be granted for the use of the property and the sale of single-serve alcoholic beverages constitutes a use. And again, that's per 65906 of the government code. So if the planning commission agrees with those findings, to include those in the resolution, and should planning commission desire to go with staff's recommendation to include all of those findings that I said before. The findings of Mr. Gangler, the findings of Mr. Webb, the findings of the planning commission, the findings contained in the staff report. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, regarding the environmental assessment, find that the project is categorically exempt under section 15332 of the state guidelines to implement the California SEQA. Under number 2, the site plan, I'll adopt that resolution P-14-006, approving the site plan portion, subject to the attached conditions of approval found in the staff report, modifying the condition regarding the street widening at the front of the property, in which the condition should address suspending that widening. However, all of the typical improvements at that frontage would still be required, typical to any other new project on a commercial street, and also as stated by Mr. Gangler during his report and questioning. Regarding the conditional use permit, adopt resolution P-14-007, approving the conditional use permit portion, subject to all the attached conditions. And the parcel map, adopt resolution P-14-014, approving the parcel map portion, subject to all the conditions found in the staff report. And by the way, that modification under the site plan that I changed that condition, I would like to make the findings that that is not injurious to the public, safety, and welfare. And also, my finding is because that is a small site with just a very small one individual building. It's not a large shopping center site coming in at this time. On number 5, the variance, I would move to deny resolution P-14-013, denying the variant portion of the case based on all of the findings in that resolution, along with the findings and justifications that was outlined by the city attorney's report. Parcel map, I think I did.
I'll second.
parcel map have been approved, and the variance has been denied. Any action of this planning commission can be, within 10 days, appealed to the city council.
For the record, we're actually, if you don't mind, we actually need to keep those exhibits or if you can, to make sure that we get copies of those exhibits for our record. Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 4 has been removed from the agenda. Agenda item number 5.
Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. Item number 5 is planning case PLN 13-00005. It's a site plan and conditional use permit to allow for the development of a gas station and convenience store, a conditional use permit to allow for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor for off-site consumption from the proposed convenience store, which is located within 300 feet of residential property, and a conditional use permit to allow for an updated master sign program. This is part of a overall shopping center that has been previously approved and previously assessed environmentally. This is located at the southwest corner of, sorry, southeast corner of Highway 395 and Luna Road. The commission previously approved this shopping center, which spans over 30 acres. It's called Luna Village. Their site plan still is active. They've had approvals by the planning commission as much as, I think, three years ago. They do have some building permit activity, but one of the sites that they wish to modify is directly at the corner of Luna and 395, which would be the conversion of this drugstore site into a gas station with convenience store. Regarding the environmental assessment, an initial study was drafted, the project was approved with a mitigated negative declaration, and we recommend that you find it, that it was previously assessed. Those mitigation measures have been included in the site plan approval. As far as the site plan, the project has been conditioned accordingly. I don't believe there's any issues with the site plan from the applicant. That also goes along with the conditional use permit for gas station. There hasn't been any negative comments from the surrounding area regarding the gas station coming to this location. As far as the last two items, the conditional use permit for the sign program, the applicant's requesting that we modify the existing sign program for the center, the modification would include allowing a 35-foot-tall pylon sign for the pricing for Chevron. What the current sign program allows is monument signs for the pad buildings, and it allows for a larger pylon sign along Luna and 395 for the entire shopping center. This is the direction that we've gone with the past sign programs along 395. So the crossroads at 395, which is under construction right now, that has a sign program that allows two large pylon signs, one on Palmdale Road and one on 395. All of the other signage on site are limited to monument signs. Same with the Lowe's project that's kind of stagnant right now at Mojave and 395. It had a sign program, allows for a large pylon signs, one on each major frontage with monument signage. So that's what, our recommendation is that you would limit it to an eight-foot monument sign for their sign. They would be allowed, per exempt code section, a second monument to be placed somewhere else on the site for an additional pricing sign, but it wouldn't increase the height. So that's just some of the background on why staff's recommending that they limit their sign to an eight-foot tall sign. As far as the alcohol sales, it's located within 300 feet of residence, and they are requesting with a letter that was submitted, that you have a copy of, Estino Design submitted a letter requesting that the commission modify their allowance of single serves. The interpretation is that the commission has the ability to modify at will the special requirements that are in code section 163.07.020. Staff would argue that, based on the entire paragraph of that section, that these are baseline standards. These are something that the commission can only add to. So, and based on the previous case today, we don't believe you should modify that at all, since it's in code. But besides that, the entire project is supported by staff with the conditions as recommended.
Thank you very much. Then I'll open the public hearing, and I have two, three, excuse me, three... Mr. DeFazio?
Can the applicant speak first? That would be me. I'm representative for the madams. First of all, good evening, commission, staff. My name's Tom Estino. I'm the architect and representative for the Mator Brothers, and we're thrilled to be here tonight with our project. We went through many iterations on this site plan and on this project with staff. They've been very thorough, and I think we have a great project on our hands. It's a great addition to the community. It's something that we hope will kickstart the entire rest of that 20-acre acre project. Speaking of our project, then, the actual corner itself, we are going to do all the traffic improvements on that intersection right there along 395 and wrap it around a corner on Luna, relocate the traffic signal, and this is an extensive amount of infrastructure cost on that intersection right there. So we agree with all that. The architecture of the building, we've modified ours to meet the existing future project that is planned to build for that 20-acre site. So we have a great look. Scott, did you have a rendering that you could have brought up at all? The colored rendering?
I believe Tessa just stiffed away. She had the ability to flip to the next page.
You don't have it up there, though?
On page 93 of the agenda is a rendering of the...
Do you have a copy of the sign program up there?
Yes, that's also in the...
The master sign program? We only have two issues in the project that we'd like to really address. The rest of the conditions are fine. The two issues that we want to address are the sign issue and the single-serve alcohol issue. I want to review the sign issue with you, and I'll let Diana Carloni then speak on the alcohol issue. So if I can, the issue of the signage. We did a study of the entire... We did a study of the entire, of the entire 395 for probably to where it intersects with the 15, I-15, out to Atalanto. We have, I wish you had that there, but I'd say there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven signs that go from 395 where it intersects with the 15 to Atalanto on Bartlett right there. We have them ranging from 35, 35 feet on the corner of Cactus and 395. The Circle K on the northeast corner of Air Expressway and 395 is 19 and a half feet. We have one on Bartlett and 395 that's 27 and a half feet. We have one, the Pilot Truck Stop in Hesperia, which is, again, it's just, if you're driving 395, you're going to see every one of these signs going down the road. We do not want to be at a disadvantage with the competition because they can't see our project. This is a highway we're on. This is not downtown Victorville. This is a highway. Let me, let me conclude with the Pilot, which is 40 feet. I have the one, the Shell on the northeast corner of Bear Valley and 395. That's 20 and a half. And then I have the one in Victorville then. It's on the corner of Palmdale, 395, and that's 16 and a half. So, these are all ranging in different sizes. I know Scott mentioned that the new Walmart will have a couple 40-footers and there is a 40-footer planned for this site, for the future development, for the overall project. What we've proposed on this corner is when the other, we modified the sign program. We pulled out two of the other monument signs. We've relocated one of the pole signs further east on Luna right there. And I'm not sure if you've talked to my guys about this, we've taken our sign down to 24 feet. Because if I look in the ordinance for signage, it does allow for a 24-foot sign. We'll be the only, we're the only gas station. I have something right here actually. The next, the next commercial business is over a mile away. It's on Palmdale Road. That's the next commercial business that is a, is a gas station to the north. And then we have one, a mile and a half down to Bear Valley, which is over a mile, almost a mile and a half, 1.458 miles. So, there's nothing between those two areas right there. And as far as the remainder of the site goes, it's a guess if it'll ever happen. It's just going to be us at this point for who knows how long. We hope this will trigger an entire development right there, but there's no guarantee that it will. So, we need a sign. We would be at a complete disadvantage with an eight-foot tall monument sign on a highway. 395 is a highway. So, we also have a, the corner, we have a corner project sign. If you see that right there, it's five-foot tall and it wraps the entire intersection right there. That's a, a center identification sign. We're putting this in, in hopes of course, that the entire Luna Center is built. So, that in itself is five-foot tall. So, it's covering up, if I put an eight-foot sign up, I'll see three feet of that sign. So, it doesn't even work for us at all. We couldn't even see a sign. Again, we're on a highway. We need a pricing sign. We don't need a monument sign now. This will be our monument sign. This will be our one combination sign. We've taken it down from the 30, actually the 31 and a half feet down to 24 feet, which does fit in the, in the ordinance that I, that I, the sign ordinance in the City of Victorville here has. If I can show that to you right here real quick.
Could you quickly finish up on your presentation?
Excuse me?
Would you finish up on your presentation quickly?
Suppose I could. Actually, I do want to show that ordinance, give you the actual ordinance number, but it's lost in translation here. Here it is. Table 22.3, Title 16, Chapter 3. The freestanding sign, tenant building center sign, it has a, it's a 24-foot high sign that allows for a monument or a pole sign. So, I just want to make sure that you understand that it does allow for a 24-foot sign. I know in the multi-tenant type projects, they're trying to keep them down to a small, everybody else in the paddock except for the one pole sign, which again, this thing's over a thousand foot long, this total center, if and when it does ever get built. But at this point, it's pie in the sky and it's only our project. So, and it is a separate parcel, of course. So, in wrapping up, we're happy to bring you our project. We agree with all the rest of the conditions. The signage is a big issue to us because without that sign, people cannot see us on a highway. And the last issue that I want to speak of, and actually I'll let Diana Carloni speak on this, is our single serve. So, Diana?
Would you please fill out a white card and give it to the secretary?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Carloni also, please.
Good evening, Commissioners of the Planning Commission. I'm Diana Carloni. I've met and worked with many of you before and even including this applicant. My focus in the applicant's presentation is on the conditional use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages, Condition 5, the single serve, as it relates to Development Code Section 16-3-07-020 of the Victorville Development Code. Now, much has been said in the staff report and to the applicant regarding Ordinance 2299, Ordinance 2299. But you have to understand that Ordinance 2299 only allows for the amendment to the Development Code. And our first request here today is that all of you look at the full Development Code section, not just the excerpt of 16-3.07.020, but the entire Development Code. Because it allows for modification of the requirements in that section based upon particular findings by the, by the hearing body about the nature and extent of the site, the particular characteristics of the site. All of those items that allow you to vary, modify perhaps is the better word, modify briefly from the code section as written. The express authority to modify is codified. The first paragraph of 16-3.07.020 says, "Certain uses, because of their nature and characteristics, may," not must, not shall, not mandatory, "may negatively impact neighboring properties and businesses. In order to help ensure these uses are not injurious to health, safety and welfare of the community, the city has developed minimum standard operating requirements or conditions. These requirements are a starting point and may be modified by the hearing body based on circumstances applicable to the site." It then goes on to state the following special requirements, which you have found repeatedly in your staff report and which talk about single serve. So, the purpose of the code section is to create a minimum standard whereby if you, the hearing body, find good cause and findings to support a modification of the restrictions, you can. And you're not compelled to modify only to make them more strict because then you'd have to change the law, because you can't take the law and unevenly apply it. You, your modification can be something that is amenable to the circumstances and finding of each site. And that's what we're asking here today. And if you don't have the whole code section, I have copies here for you. Next, the word modification, when you do interpretation of code, is given its usual meaning. In Merriam-Webster Online, "Modification is defined as the making of a limited change, also the result of such a change." What we're asking here from you tonight is to make a modification to the single serve based upon factual circumstances that we are presenting here tonight and that were summarized in our letter. Those factual circumstances include characteristics of the site and concerns that we understand the City of Victorville has about single serve. And I would submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, that you cannot sit here and make a finding tonight that single serve alcohol promotes drunk driving. Because if you do, you have, you have insufficient foundation, you have no substantive evidence, and you would be making that finding, denying the applicant due process because the applicant should have the opportunity to refute that and bring evidence that would support either finding to the alternative. The applicant has specifically asked staff, and I'm sorry, has asked the commission to modify the single serve in two respects. This first one allows 24 ounces and above, single serve, and I think you may have gotten a picture in your packet. The second would be to allow for one additional distilled spirit size of 200 milliliter. This is not a single serve size offering and this is why we're asking it. That's just the one there. Other than that, and let me go back to the single serve, 24 ounces and above only applies to beer and alcoholic energy drinks. Nothing else. Your limitations on wine and the other prohibitions that are included in the code section, we obviously will abide by. We understand the City of Victorville wants to protect health, safety and welfare of the community and protect its neighborhoods. We understand there's a problem with panhandling and loitering. We have many of these convenience store stations throughout the Victor Valley. We are very, very cognizant and very diligent on our security. We offer the following evidence to show why you can make findings that a modification would be appropriate. First, your statute is stated to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community and to protect neighborhoods. This business is a highway-oriented business. It's not community-oriented. It serves commuters and travelers. There is no community that immediately surrounds it. Your residential communities within quote 300 feet are blocked by solid masonry walls. That's meant to separate that residential area from the commercial corridor. It's meant to block out noise, light and disturbances of the highway corridor. The orientation of this business is not towards the residential properties. It is towards the highway. There is no invitation or direct appeal to the pedestrians or to the residential area to use these store facilities. There is no location to rest or sit that promotes or supports loitering or panhandling. There are no schools or bus stops in the immediate vicinity.
Could you finish up, please?
There are no.
I have two other people that wish to speak.
I understand that, but this is the applicant's statement of his case and I think he's entitled.
And we usually give the applicant five minutes, so.
No school or bus stops or amenities are there to attract minors or other pedestrians. If you look at the map we provided, the way the residences is oriented, you must walk over 600 feet to get to the store from the properties on Cantina and you must walk over 1,200 feet to get to the store from properties on the opposite side of 395. The applicant is not a successful businessman because he serves single serve items. He's a successful businessman because he has a convenience store and a fueling station that meets the needs of your residents, the commuting and traveling population. He is a safe location to stop and shop for the forgotten item on the way home, to pick up the supplies necessary for a road trip or vacation. Adding these limited, single serve matters and the one distilled spirit size does not offend the purposes or objectives of the municipal code. The circumstances of the highway-oriented business and the lack of direct access in the neighborhood also support the modification. This code section specifically gives the commission the opportunity to modify. We ask for these minor modifications, limited in scope and nature, that are particular to a freeway-oriented business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, members of the commission, I just wanted to ask the applicant, was there anything else that you wanted to say at this point? I would agree with, with the applicant that they have sufficient time. They have a right to be heard. In subsidies, they do allow for significant more time. It is a public hearing, so I just wanted to make sure that you have in fact been heard.
Anything else, Mr. Stino? We would be happy to answer questions of the commission and to respond once the public hearing has been conducted. Thank you.
The last thing I would like to add in closing is the Maida Brothers have over 30 stores in the state of California up and down the coast. These are well-respected business operators who run a very good business. Ask anybody who, we bust with the folks here that might want to tell you a little bit about their business, but they do a great job up and down the coast of California. There's quite a few in the high desert here. If you've ever been in any of their stores, you will know that they're set apart from the rest of the crowd. Thank you.
Mr. Bruce Callen?
Good evening, Commissioners of Victorville. I appreciate this opportunity to address you. My name's Bruce Callen. I live in Apple Valley. I'm currently serving as Vice Chairman on Planning Commission for the town of Apple Valley. It's a thrill for me to be here tonight. These applicants are business associates that I've known over 20 years. They're actually friends of mine that I've known over 20 years. As Mr. Stino stated, they're very well-respected operators. They own the two Chevron stations in Apple Valley. If any of you have gone to Apple Valley, the one on Yoculoma and Apple Valley Road and the one on Central. Both serve alcoholic beverages. Both very top-quality operations, clean, well-run, everybody wears a uniform. They've never been cited. What we're talking about here tonight, I'm here in support for them and I hope you will consider the modification to your code. As Ms. Carloni mentioned, it was disconcerting to me to read the staff report and only see an excerpt of your code basically disallowing the sales of those items when your municipal code basically says that you have the flexibility as commission to allow for at least a portion of it, maybe not all of it, maybe not exactly what everybody wants, but you have the ability to modify it. And I disagree with Mr. Webb. It doesn't say in there that you can only add to it. I don't understand where that came from. In reading it, it appears to me that there's some issues that could be negotiated tonight. I hope you're open to that. This is definitely different as a highway station. The applicants earlier, the Circle K, I understand, the neighborhood issue, I've lived here all my life. I know what we're up against. I know what happens in these parking lots. This is not the case. I think it's unfair to penalize a new applicant or a new business. It'd be like if I, one of you commissioners had a business, and I know a few of you individually, if, if somebody, if you came to Victorville and said, "I want to have a real estate office", but the City of Victorville said, "Well, you can have your real estate office, but you can't sell land." Or if you had a glass company and you wanted to come to Victorville and said, "I want to sell all different kinds of glass," and they said, "No, you can't sell anything below 24 inches." It's, it's just not fair. If you're going to apply a code like this or any kind of an ordinance, it should be the same for everybody. Phase everybody out. Make them so they can't sell it. The problem is in existing locations. It's not necessarily a new location. You can condition this location to say if there's any problem or any police calls, we can then bring that condition into fruition. But I think at this point, it's premature. I don't think it's fair. Earlier, you had a Circle K. I think that's an apple. Right now, we're talking about an orange. And I don't think that the, that the ordinance is meant to be one broad stroke. With regard to the sign program, I know the owner of the development, Morty Forspand, who is going to be the Luna Village developer eventually, I'm hurrying. I can, I can see that look in your eye. You should come to some Apple Valley Planning Commission meetings. With regards to the development, it's going to be first class. He's done everything that you could possibly do. He's been in business with Target, with Walmart, Lowe's. It's going to be first class. This sign program, it is flexible. I understand what the city wants to do with the eight-foot signs, but in this case, it's a separate parcel. It's on the corner. They're going to spend upwards of $5 million on improving this corner. They should be able to advertise their business. Once the, the actual Luna Village takes place, then at that point, I think they could modify it and maybe do things that are more visually appealing to the city, but I think that may be a ways away. In the meantime, I would allow them to put up a 20-foot sign. This is 20 feet. There's no reason why you couldn't have a 20-foot sign on 395. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeFazio?
Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners, I'm here in support of the project. I live at 15268 Riverside Drive in Apple Valley. And a couple of things I want to bring up, one about the alcohol issues. I have a real estate office on Hesperia Road at the corner of Sunny Hill and we have a liquor store next door. And in that liquor store, they're limited to three beer sales, constantly in the mornings and the evenings. What I'm finding, instead of the guy buying one beer, they're buying three beers and being drunk on the site. I've got people sleeping under the stairs all the time and there's always people from the apartment complexes which are right there, over there. They don't buy one because they can't buy one, so they buy three beers and they sit out there and drink them. So, and also I, I frequent the AMPM on the corner of D Street and Highway 18, or D and 7th. And same thing, there's always people asking me for money. There's panhandlers. It's the quality of the neighborhood. These gentlemen run a store on the corner of Apple Valley Road in Yoculoma and one on Central and Highway 18 that I've been to. There's never any problems. There's never panhandlers and they sell single serve beverages and don't have a problem. What I'm saying is on the 395 side, it shouldn't be a problem with a single serve beverage like it is in downtown Victorville. Because I live it every day. I have to push people out. They're sleeping there at night. They're sleeping there at night. They come in the afternoons. They sit there and they drink three beers because they can't buy one. So it's a problem for me. And my real estate office is right there, and they're right in the parking lot drinking three instead of one. So I'd just like to say that it's the quality of the neighborhood that makes a difference. This is a highway location. You don't have lower-end homes in the neighborhood. You're not going to have the problems that you have in downtown, and the commission has the right to give a variance on it, and I think they should look at the different sites. On the sign issue, I want to talk about, there's a precedence at the Costco Center. They have a sign that's put up, the big pylon sign. Costco has a right to use it. They've never taken that right, so there's bigger signs for the other people. An option would be to allow them to build the large sign now and use it till the rest of the center comes in. And they've done that at the Costco Center, and that sign is very important to their business. So if you allow them to build, that could be an option. Let them build the big sign today, use it. It's already approved, and then when the other businesses come in, they have to relocate the signage. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to agenda item number five?
Madam Chair, we have two members from the Sheriff's Department here from the alcohol control team, if you'd like to hear from them.
Yes, I would. Yes, they need to put in cards.
Hi, I'm Deputy Hoagum. With the Victorville City Police. This is my partner, Deputy Waterhouse. We're part of the alcohol compliance team. We supported the single-serve ordinance several months ago when you guys passed it for specific reasons of drinking and driving, loitering. There are actual studies, if you look up Institute for Public Strategies, which is very prevalent or involved in the community here in the city of Victorville. If you look them up, they have a huge spread on single-serve alcohol, which includes UCR, University of California, Riverside study that they found that it increases crime rates in the city, and that's UCR study, not anything that I'm involving. She mentioned the twenty-four-ounce drink, which they're served cold. You don't go in and buy a twenty-four-ounce hot beer. It's promoted for immediate consumption, or it would not be served cold. A forty-ounce beer is three and a half beers. They mentioned that, yeah, they might go in and buy three packs of beer, and they might drink them in there, but again, they have to purchase three of them. If they were single-served, they would buy three. Possibly, they could buy three. So there's very broad evidence factors or whatever the case may be. However, we support the single-serve ordinance. We stand by it. That's why we recommended it or approved it with you guys several months ago. There's... Can I say that every single person that goes in and buys a twenty-four-ounce beer is going to go ahead and open it up and drink it on the road? No, I can't. It does make it a lot easier, though, because it is served cold, ready to be consumed, and that's the reason why they are served cold. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Would you mind filling out one of these white cards, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for the record, these cards are for the city clerk to accurately record the minutes, incidentally.
Okay. I have one question.
Sure.
What are your thoughts on some of the discussion the applicant talked about regarding this? We're saying it's a different neighborhood, okay? It's a different neighborhood, should be a different justification or look at it a little different. What are your thoughts on that? What are you seeing out there?
As far as it being closer to a residential zone, you're going to have the issues no matter what. It's on the freeway. The drinking and driving is a big concern of ours. Alcohol beverage control, the State Department, when we talk to them about it, and they're a big supporter of it, other cities, several other large cities have gone to this and are very successful. One mentioned, "It's unfair for us." San Bernardino PD attempted to close down all of theirs. They, San Bernardino PD enacted the single-serve ordinance, and they tried to go in and say, "Hey, now you can't serve single-serve." We can't do that unless we bring every single one person in front of you guys, and you guys change their conditional use permit. We're not, there's law, case law that says we're not allowed to do that. So that, would I be a proponent or a supporter of every single alcohol dispenser or alcohol off-sale location being single-serve? Yes, I would. No matter what location it's in, you're going to have, single-serve is cheaper. You can buy one for twenty-four ounces. Your lower-income families, no matter where they are, yes, it's their right to purchase the alcohol and do whatever they want with their money, but it's easier for them to do it that way. They have less, just less free money, less disposable income. It's easier for them to buy a 124-ounce can rather than a three-pack. So I don't, I can't go into the numbers as far as low income in that area. I don't know. But in my opinion, there is no reason for it to be anywhere, in my opinion.
Very much. Do you have anything to add to that?
Just one small thing. I'm Deputy Waterhouse. I'll fill out a white card for you here in just a second. The whole purpose of the ordinance was to, it's a preventative measure, basically. It's going to cut down later on, I'm not, just like my partner said, we're not saying that every person that goes in there to consume that alcohol or buy that single-serve alcohol is going to go out in the parking lot and consume it there and get drunk there. But what we're looking at is a preventative measure that will keep that from occurring. Okay? You stated in a planning commission, we also go speak to the city council, and we hear their input on it, too. We have a serious problem with panhandling, drunken public-type calls. And as they said, one person stated early, it is. It is concentrated a lot downtown, but that's not to say that it isn't going to go somewhere else if we allow it to. So that's the only, that's the only point that I wanted to make. It's a preventative measure to help law enforcement and the businesses.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dan William?
Thank you, and I realize we're taking up a lot of your time tonight, but I appreciate your indulgence. So thank you, commissioners. And just to give you a little background, again, these are my competitors, you know, in terms of the retail business, but I do know them in the marketplace, and they are good operators. But the thing I wanted to address, I've been in the retail business now for thirty years, from restaurants to convenience. And as a gentleman pointed out, you know, from the police department, it's true that someone can take a twenty-four-ounce can and consume that immediately. So that's always a possibility. The only thing I'd ask the commissioners to consider is, if you're saying that someone has to buy a six-pack or an eighteen-pack or a twelve-pack, all of those are sold in our coolers, and they're sold cold. There's nothing to stop that person either from opening up the case and drinking one immediately because it's cold. So I guess just what I'm saying is that as much as I understand their argument, and I'm sure as retailers, these gentlemen face issues, as we face issues at Circle K, to be making sure that our sites are safe, not only for the employees but for the public, and making sure that we're, you know, again, being good retailers. But from the standpoint of being competitive, if you're not going to apply the same principles to the other retailers who are already doing this and only apply it to the people who are new, it just creates a competitive disadvantage. And quite frankly, I know, you know, looking at this side or our site, I know you want investment in the community. The key is, you know, are we responsible retailers? Circle K is, this company I can tell you is, and again, we take care of our business, we take care of our customers, and we're responsible. And so from the standpoint of the argument made, I understand, but I would just say again that any one of the customers can come in by a larger pack size, from six-pack to thirty-six-pack, and they can open that immediately in their car if that's what they want to do. And I would even say, and just so you know, I had to go through this issue in San Luis Obispo a long time ago. And the same ordinance applied. If you had a gas station, you could not, in fact, in that case, you couldn't sell beer at all if you had a gas station, because again, the concern was drinking and driving. But I actually took video of the 7-Eleven in town, which did not sell gasoline, and you can just watch how many people pull in in their car and buy beer and get back in their car and drive away. And so again, it really gets back to people being responsible. We have to do our part to be the responsible retailers, but quite frankly, consumers need to be responsible as drivers and as citizens of the community, and that's what it comes back to. So thank you for your indulgence. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to agenda item number five? Okay. Could you make it for three minutes, please?
I just want to say a couple of things, and Mr. Williams said it very well. You know, if you're going to drink, you can actually buy that six-pack probably easier than you can a single-serve because it's now a twelve-ouncer. Okay? So limiting the size or the amount that you buy does not stop. If you're so inclined to drink something, you buy that six-pack or the three-pack, you're going to do it. Okay? So I don't think that a single-serve is limiting or helping or fixing anything. The other thing is laws, laws, laws. This is like New York, limiting the size of your sugary drink that you can buy. It's the same type of thing. We're imposing, every time you turn around, there's another law, they say you can't do this, and you can't do that. That's not right, and it's definitely not right for the competition now. You know, we're going to spend $5 million on this project here. That's a lot of money. You have to make a lot of money. You have to sell a lot of everything, fuel, chips, whatever it may be, to be able to break even or even to make a dollar on something like this. We do not want a project like this to fail. We want this to be a success in our community. When somebody's going to come in and have this much faith in the community to put a project like this, you want them to succeed. Let's help them succeed in this.
Very much.
Thank you.
Briefly, thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners. I think the arguments have been well-stated. I would like to just remind the commission about the differences in the business orientation, and I would like to remind the commission by the fact that we're not asking for every single-serve. We understand concerns. We understand that the lesser-expensive drinks might be more easily purchased. We are willing to stay at a different level. If there is some part of our request that you can grant, we would be most appreciative. If you're going to make a finding about drinking, driving, and some studies that the police officers may have referred to but have not provided to the applicant or were not part of the staff's original report, we would request an opportunity to be able to respond to them.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this item? And I will close the public hearing.
Ms. Chair, members of the commission, if I may, prior to the commission having any kind of motion on this, it has been noted, I think, that the commission thinks to the applicant that section sixteen dash three point oh seven oh point oh two oh has been given to the commission for their review. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things. The second sentence, it does say, "In order to help ensure these uses are not injurious to the health, safety, and welfare of the community, the city has developed minimum standard operating requirements or conditions." In addition, if you read the sentence that's actually highlighted, it says, "These requirements are a starting point and may be modified by the hearing body." However, if you go on to read section A two, Romanet two, it specifically says, "An establishment selling alcohol for off-site consumption shall be prohibited from selling single-serve alcoholic beverage," and it goes on to say, you know, the sizes, including but not leaving whatever, it goes on to say the sizes. You have it in front of you. The applicant has a copy of it. And I just wanted to point that out, that it seems like there's a floor to what the city's code is saying. I'm not 100% sure about that, but I did want to go ahead and point that out to the planning commission.
Members of the commission, I could clarify some of the statements that were said related to codes and the signage, if you'd like. One of the applicant's statement is that they lowered the sign height to twenty-four feet, and he referenced a code section, a table that allowed for lots that are two acres and smaller, that they'd be allowed to twenty-four feet. That is true. There is a footnote that's attached to that that says, "The zoning administrator shall allow freestanding signs on parcels less than two acres only when a finding is made that no other permitted sign, no other permitted sign type can reasonably serve the needs of the business." So what that's saying is that the code's not outright permitted a twenty-four-foot-high sign on every two-acre parcel or less. In fact, this parcel is 1.2 acres. The intent of our sign program and our code is to detract from sign clutter. 395, if every parcel is these shopping centers build out, if everyone that is in 1.2 acres had a twenty-four-foot-high sign that says something visually, I'm not sure if that's what the commission would want to see. Secondly, I mentioned the other shopping centers that have these sign programs. We recently just administratively approved a Chevron that was part of your overall shopping center for the 395 crossroads. They're limited to a monument sign. So in a sense, we got one, you know, a mile south of it that they're requesting something higher. So just want you to take that into consideration. The location, they have placed the sign, if you see on their site plan, it's located behind this like moon-shaped Luna Village monument sign. They could move that, their monument sign or that advertises Chevron to a different location on the site. Like I said earlier, they are allowed by code two monument signs. They could put one on 395, one on Luna. Regarding the alcohol sales, you know, this was, this was an ordinance that was passed. We're not here to justify whether or not it's legal or not at this point. It was put in place due to public safety issues. Other cities have done it, like the police department has said, that it's a means to help protect public health, safety, and welfare. We've also been implementing this on conditional use permits for the past three years. Even though this is a new code requirement, when any finding of public convenience came in or a conditional use permit for alcohol sales within 300 feet, this condition has been applied. So other uses within the city, like 7-Eleven on La Paz and 395, I'm sorry, La Paz and Seventh Street, they have the single-serve. Also, Walgreens at the corner of Rogers and Amargosa, these are all... Did I say Circle? Yeah, and obviously the Circle K.
For clarification, when you say they have the single-serve, you're talking about they have the single-serve prohibition, correct?
I'm sorry. Yeah, they have the single-serve prohibition that has been conditioned. Yeah, thanks. But we're here if you have any other questions.
I had just a question in regards to the signage. At the handout they passed on, there were a couple that were at sixteen and a half feet, Arco Station, but for visibility purposes, does that be something, as Mr. DeFazio was talking about, be allowed until the development of the rest of the center, and then the sign height be brought down?
It's quite complicated. It's hard to say that because right now, the property is one. It's under one property ownership, most of the shopping center. So we could regulate that when someone came in. But what the applicant has currently in with the city and that we were waiting on this approval for was a lot line adjustment to basically break this parcel off from the rest of the shopping center. So what would most likely occur is it's hard to have the shopping center and then say, "You need to now modify that pylon sign that's on their property after the fact." It's hard to regulate that matter.
Who's asking for what?
Well, the... Well, could you clarify?
They've got a photo of one for an Arco Station.
Oh, okay. By his testimony, I thought he was saying, "What if they built one of the approved sign program signs and had a Chevron sign on it?" Okay, that's my...
When you're traveling on the highway, it seems like gas signs are, seems to be the highest first thing you see when you're looking for gas. And I'm one to look for special gas stations, and eight foot seems awfully low for a gas station sign while I'm traveling. And there are probably a lot of them out there, but I see a whole lot more higher signs than I do low signs. I see nothing wrong with having a higher sign for gas because once you went by, pretty hard to turn around and go back. I don't know why there's so many high gas station signs or the other signs, and why four feet don't seem to be that high to me. But that's just my opinion. I realize if everybody wants a 24-foot sign, or the next person wants a 25-foot sign, I realize you've got a problem. Where do you draw the line? I guess I'm trying to think of.
Yeah, Commissioner Huber, I don't know where the line is drawn, but I do agree with that. I think fuel stations are a little bit different than your typical retailer. You're kind of travel destination. You're looking for fuel. You're looking out for it versus a sign that says there's a Starbucks or a Staples there. You know, you're shopper, you need to know where it is. You can kind of glance and see that. And these fuel signs, a big importance to the traveler. The person running out of gas in their car is, and they're gonna look and see, want to see what the fuel prices are. And typically, those are up on that sign, too. I don't know if you'd be able to see those fuel prices on an eight-foot sign anyways. I'm not opposed to getting it up a little bit, but just enough so that maybe the intersection traffic coming up there can see what the fuel prices are, but not necessarily a big 25, 30-foot gigantic billboard of that brand. Because let's face it, as we're coming down 395, from quite a distance away, I can tell that's a Chevron just by the look of the canopy, you know, from quite a ways away. But I might want to see what the fuel prices are a little bit above the car next to me who's blocking it at the intersection.
And I don't necessarily, we don't necessarily disagree that there's some convenience to being able to see a fuel sign before you get to it. This center wasn't designed with a fuel station in it. It was designed with a Walgreens or a Rite Aid. The signage was developed around that. So, the thing you need to think about if you're going to change it, this sign has nothing to do with the rest of the sign program. You need to think about that. If we're modifying the sign program, should we just be allowing this sign that doesn't even fit in? Or should we be modifying the whole sign program then?
If it went a little bit, if it did go a little bit taller, what are your suggestions to modify it to the sign, in terms of color and architectural look, mostly?
Well, yeah, as far as the design, the shopping center has a typical monument sign look to it. So, that could easily be achieved as far as the design. Yeah, no, this is obviously, yeah, this is obviously a modification to the sign program. What we're saying is it's not in accord with like the intent of the original sign program or previous approvals of sign programs of shopping centers of comparable size on the same street. In saying that, though, Commissioner Kirth, if you're referring to just the design of the sign, there is a graphic of this...
Page 94.
Yeah, of the approved sign program that shows like a typical cap and base. It's an aluminum cabinet, basic design.
And that's what I'm saying. They modified the sign program to add their sign. They didn't comply, it doesn't comply with the rest of the signs. It doesn't look like the rest of the signs. It's not designed like them.
So, on page 96 is what they're proposing.
Which is compatible.
No.
Oh, 96, I'm sorry.
95, 96, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Don't have to.
I'll declare the public hearing reopened.
Thank you. Back to the sign program. We had to go through a separate CUP application. And we have, we actually applied for that CUP application to analyze the entire site. That entire site, and I believe you have a copy I gave you earlier, we removed two of the monument signs plus our own monument signs. So, truly, there was three monument signs that was removed in place of this one. Okay? So, there's, we took out three signs to put our one sign in. We don't have a monument sign. We're not asking for a monument sign. We're asking for one sign that'll be a combination sign on that intersection on that highway that'll show our gas pricing and the Chevron logo. So, you can actually see this sign. But we did analyze the entire program of that site, and there is an overall site sign program that we prepared. And the 24 feet, we started at the, Chevron actually has specific heights of their signs. So, it's not like we can say, "Well, let's just put a 16-footer in or a 12-footer in." Chevron has very distinct, this is a major corporation, they have very distinct sign sizes for us. So, if we're gonna put all three, which is required in California, all three of the gas pricing fuel grades, we have to, by state law, advertise all those fuel grades. Plus, we have the diesel now, so now there's four. And these are 12- to 16-inch, I think we went 16 on this one here, so you can't see them from a distance. So, it adds to the height of the sign also. And then also, Chevron requires us to be eight feet above finished grade. So, these are all little things that add up to that sign, to the size that we're at. And not to mention our documented, our sign, the five-foot-tall project identification sign, the Luna identification sign, is five feet in front of it. And there is no other place to put that sign. It's right on the intersection behind that sign. So, we're shielded by the landscaping. We have a very lush landscape. We haven't, we didn't even talk about landscaping on this project. It's a very lush landscaping that is part of the overall project. But, and that was, we did not change that from the overall project. And that was part of the stipulation of buying this piece of property and doing this project on that piece of property is because we had to meet the existing designs of the overall center, including all the lush landscaping in the front, the identification sign, the five-foot-high Masonry sign in front that says Luna Village, and all of that. So, we tried to work with the original developer of the site for his vision for the original project that is still alive, and we tried to work with staff on making this thing comply. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing again. Ask what your pleasure is.
Well, in my mind, again, I still feel that the Chevron station there needs a higher sign than the rest of the shopping center. And it looks like in this, on 96, the Chevron sign is the highest by far. Am I right? Not?
Yeah, on 395, the center hasn't been built yet, but that was the trade-off when the sign program was adopted, that you would allow these taller signs above 24 feet. That's what the current code allows. Through these sign programs, they were allowed larger signs to advertise their major tenants and to eliminate every single tenant having a freestanding sign on the street. So, that's where we're at. The rest of the developments have limited signage to an eight-foot monument.
And originally, that was gonna be a pharmacy store or something?
That's correct. And actually, in the original sign program, they didn't even have a monument sign. If you look on page 94, that's actually the approved sign program as it stands today. And I believe it was a Food for Less at the time this was originally approved, was one of the major tenants, and they had a gas station proposed at the front of it. So, you could see Sign D on page 94 was an eight-foot monument sign, which is also on page 95. So, it's something that was designed for originally to have a gas station, just not at the corner for this location.
And what would happen if we would approve a higher sign, and then they have to come back in and get the rest of the site signage changed? I mean, I can understand the economy, and you're changing this and you're changing that, and now we want a gas station there. But you've already designed the center for signs. So, in my mind, I would like to see a higher sign. But then, in my own mind, then they're gonna have to come in and justify that big sign and eliminate some other signs. That's, would be my opinion. Please, we're not, I like a high-gas sign. I'm sorry, I just, higher than eight, 10 feet. And as far as the alcohol, alcohol is not the most important thing here. I think the sign is a whole lot more critical than the alcohol, in my mind. But that's just me. But that's my comments, Chairman.
Are they, they're requesting an overall sign of 31 feet 6 inches?
No.
Until today, when they mentioned that it's now 24, is what they're requesting.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, prior to making any motion, again, I would ask that the Planning Commission incorporate the findings in the staff report, and specifically with regard to the single-serve alcohol, should the Commission so desire and find that allowing single-serve alcohol would go against Victorville Municipal Code Section If the Commission doesn't find that, then to state findings that it otherwise deems fit.
One quick question regarding the signage. I'm trying to think if there's been any other larger proposed centers that have a master sign program in Victorville that has fuel out front. I'm wondering, are those signs for the fuel business, no matter what the height the decision is? Are those tied in a little bit more architectural with the master sign program typically?
Correct. Like I mentioned, the crossroads 395, it hasn't been constructed yet, but there's a Chevron within that center. A similar type of sign program set up as the one we're discussing tonight. But they have a monument sign that's architecturally compatible with all the other signs in the center.
Could, if this sign was to go higher, and I don't even know how high, maybe somebody's gonna make a motion on the height, could it, could we add a condition possibly that would, a little bit more architectural compatible to the rest of the master sign program?
Without a doubt, yes, that can be something...
It wouldn't look just like this bland, straight-up tall.
Yeah, if you wanted to just match the existing sign program, that would probably be enough.
I mean, I'm seeing, you know, it's a top cap and offset a little bit. I don't know if there's a little stucco on the side or what that is.
Well, my next question would be, if I would make a motion of 24 feet high, am I completely out of line what we're doing in Victorville? Are there 24 and higher gas signs in Victorville?
There is. You know, the codes regarding signage and the shopping center master sign programs have been developed over the last 10 years. So, obviously, there's older, older gas stations that have 24-foot-high signs. I think they had 10 over the last 10 years where the Planning Commission is to, you know, eliminate some of this sign blight or the potential for sign blight. And when we allow all of these shopping centers to be parceled into multiple parcels, we need to address that because if every parcel's allowed their own freestanding sign, it creates a dilemma that creates more signage. So, yes, to answer your question, yes, there is, there is other gas stations within the city that have taller signs. There is an existing Arco down the street that's in our municipality that has a taller sign than eight feet.
Many, many years ago, Mojave Drive wanted a high sign on the east side or the south side, and I made him run a balloon up 30 feet to see if it was blocking the freeway. And it wasn't. Well, I don't know, I don't know where the limit is of 24 feet, 18 feet, 16 feet. I don't know that limitation. I'm just knowing they were asking for 31...
24.
They were originally asking for 31.6 or something like that was the original height they wanted, and bring it back to 24. I'll make the motion. We sit here all day long and argue, but I'll make the motion. I move the approval of the Find the Project Previously Assessed under the Minigated Negative Declaration adopted for the entire shopping center. Adopt Resolution Number P-13027 approving the site plan portion of case number PLN-130005, which includes the suspension of off-site improvements. Conditional Use Permit Gas Station. Adopt Resolution P-13028 approving the gas station Condition Use Permit portion of case number PLN-13-0005. Condition Use Permit, the sign program. Adopt Resolution Number P-13040 approving a master sign program modified, approved shopping center allowing a freestanding tenant sign gas station not to exceed 24 feet. And the Condition 5, no on it. I don't, I'm reading it here, but I don't know what it's telling me. I don't want to adopt resolution. So, I want to eliminate the...
Well, this is just for the alcohol sales within 300 feet?
Yeah.
Do this, the project condition, this doesn't address the single-serve, but you can, you can obviously make that motion and clarify.
Got enough tonight?
If you didn't make the motion, then they wouldn't be allowed alcohol sales at all.
No, I don't want that. I just want the...
So, you wanted the, you wanted to approve the Conditional Use Permit as conditioned with the additional finding that allowing single-serve alcohol would go against the Victorville Municipal Code section?
That's just what I wanted to say.
Awesome. Fantastic. In addition to that, just to clarify the motion for the 24 feet, did you also want to include something to the effect of the 24-foot sign shall be architecturally incorporated into the site, et cetera, maybe as approved by the Planning Director or something like that?
Well, I kind of would like to see that, but Chevron's probably gonna go against it. So, I, at this time, I'm not, you know, let... I think there's gonna be some discussion about the rest of the signage of the track. They're gonna have to come back in, and next time they come back in and want higher signs, they probably won't get it by me.
Great. I just wanted the clarification. Thank you.
Are you done?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and second that.
Agenda Item Number Six. In compliance with the Brown Act, it is necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. If you have anything to say, please limit your comments to three minutes. Does anyone wish to speak on any matter concerning the Planning Commission? Does anyone wish to speak on any matter concerning the Planning Commission?
I'm responsible, too, but I just...
Okay. Members of the Planning Commission, I wanted to speak generally on the aspect of both signage and looking at businesses, I'm sorry, and the alcohol issue, looking at businesses that are neighborhood-specific versus perhaps oriented towards a highway. There are some unique differences. There are cities that have those types of ordinances that will take a freeway-oriented business and create some particular regulations that will meet the needs of a freeway or a highway-oriented business. I know that Barstow has quite a complete portion of the Development Code on that particular issue. I did not see that in my review of the Victorville Development Code. I think that the situation cries out for that kind of consideration, so I plant the idea in the event in your next Development Code review that that kind of issue can come up and at least be discussed. The second item that I've wanted to bring forward, it just escaped my mind, I'm having CRS, had to do with... No, I gave you my signage. Good grief, it was on the alcohol, but it was a point I wanted to make that I cannot make now because it's not coming to mind. And with that, and when it comes back to my mind, perhaps I'll go ahead and just send a letter to Mr. Borchardt and say, "These are things that were on my mind, and if they can be considered in the future, we'll do it that way." I apologize. It's been a hard evening. We've had some great discussion.
May I ask, on the regulations that you're talking about for freeway, you're not just addressing signs and alcohol. Are you talking about all around, or you just...
No, no, no. I'm talking about signage for freeway-oriented businesses. I know that Food for Less is very aggressive in their sign programs. What happens with large monument or large signs that are forty feet for your main tenants? And here's a situation that I have in Barstow where the Food for Less had a fueling station at the main shopping center, and they had a large freeway-oriented sign that was allowed by the council that had their prices on it, but they were allowed to plant it right next to a sign for a fueling station of a different company. And the fueling station for the different company, who is my client, is besieged with complaints, besieged with Better Business Bureau complaints, calls to its franchisor because their prices are different than the fueling in Food for Less. And it's greatly caused confusion. We have a writ of mandate pending, we're waiting for a decision, because we don't feel that in looking at that particular conditional use permit, they had an adequate study of the surrounding smaller businesses or franchisees, and that confusion is creating a hardship. And of course, with the CUP, one of the issues is it doesn't impact adversely in the surrounding businesses. And so, that was one thing we're looking at.
I just have one question. I just want a clarification on that last alcohol ordinance, on that CUP portion. How did that findings go at the end there? You had mentioned something, I'm not sure if it was adopted or not. Was there a single-serve? How did this go? I didn't quite catch that.
Sure, I could go ahead and clarify that. I'm sorry if I'm just... Hang on, let me get back to... Just for clarification. Just with respect to the CUP regarding alcohol sales, that was actually approved, however, with the finding that allowing single-serve alcohol would go against Section sixteen dash three point oh seven oh, point oh two oh of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Okay. So, we do not allow any single-serve, then? I just want to clarify that.
That is correct, at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate all the effort you put in, all of you. Thanks, Scott. All right. Good night.
Madam Chair, we're on public comment, correct? Is that right? We're on public comment right now? Okay.
Hi, again, real quick. Just want to make a couple of comments on my experience with the Victorville Planning Commission meeting tonight. On your ordinance, it would seem to me, as a businessperson, I've been in business for thirty years, it's creating an unfair competition. I would ask that the Commission go to the council and see about maybe redoing the ordinance to the effect where maybe you can see if there's a problem that exists, then solve it rather than penalize new people on things that they have no control over, no part of. In a case like this where you have a gas station serving beverages that another gas station that's, you know, a quarter-mile away, they're allowed those uses where there may be a problem. The problem still exists. It's going on in their parking lot. It's just not going to happen in the new parking lot. And I disagree with the sheriff representative. It's an enforcement thing. It's something that happens everywhere. Anybody can buy anything and do anything they want and create a crime. So, I think we're unfairly creating a competition that shouldn't be in existence. Everybody should be on the same playing field. And I have a friend that owns an auto parts business, and it happens regularly where CO2 or something in an item comes up, and the state of California says, "We can no longer sell this item," but he'll get a letter in the mail saying, "By, you know, June first, you have to eliminate this item from your shelves and make it so that it's not for sale anymore." This goes on for everybody. So, then that way, the consumer can't go to, you know, one store and get that particular item and then go to his store and not get it. It's just not fair for competition. So, that would be my comment tonight. And I appreciate the meeting, and I know you guys are... It's a thankless job, so thanks a lot.
Does anyone else wish to speak under public comments? Go on to the new business agenda item on architectural compatibility of residential accessory structures that do not require a building permit.
Madam Chair, this is just a follow-up to our December meeting. Staff's put together just a snapshot of some other cities and their regulations on accessory structures under one hundred and twenty square feet and above one hundred and twenty square feet. Just to summarize, most of them, actually, all of them do not regulate...
Excuse... I'm sorry, Scott. I just recognize someone in the audience here who missed the public comment period and who is sitting here for the teasers revocation.
We're not done yet.
Oh, with public... I thought we're on item six. We skipped the... We passed the public comment section. I'm thinking...
Number seven is what you're... We'll get the...
No, I think they were here to speak because they got a public notice for an item that was pulled from the agenda and was told that... And I was told that they need to speak during the public comment period. If they're here to speak regarding the revocation of teasers, they need to be allowed to speak during the public comments.
Oh, okay.
Just for clarification for members of the public...
I recognize her from the previous teasers revocation, so I believe they're probably here because they got a notice in the mail. Okay.
Just for clarification, one of those items has in fact been pulled totally off the agenda. Because you did receive notice, should you wish to come and speak a public comment? That's absolutely fine, but the Planning Commission will not even consider that item whatsoever tonight. If and when the Planning Commission does consider that item, you will be re-noticed. So, just to let you know, you will be re-noticed if the Planning Commission considers that item in the future. But should you wish to discuss anything at public comments, you're more than welcome to.
For Agenda Item seven, which is the rescinding of the resolution...
I thought it was also... Then never mind, then you could go ahead and speak on seven. I'm sorry, I thought it was for number...
Another item's just going to take a minute.
I thought it was for four, no?
Well, they're talking about numbers.
All right. I apologize then for even creating more confusion.
Don't fall for everything, okay?
So, basically, we really don't need to make any changes?
We don't. Yeah. Anything under the one hundred and twenty square feet in size, I don't think we should regulate. We can't regulate the things that we have now. As far as a building permit, then we can regulate it. That's my feeling.
I got that. I agree.
I agree.
This was on the... We're talking about regulations on compatibility of accessory structures, but if they're under one hundred and twenty square feet in size, they are usually something that you buy just to store your personal stuff in. And if it's over one hundred and twenty square feet, we can regulate it via the building permit process. And how do you feel, Commissioner, through...
Yeah. And our current policy, I believe, you know, there's a height restriction, even if it is one hundred and twenty square feet, right?
Yes. It would... If it requires a building permit if it's over twelve feet in height, so the restriction would be twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
On a small one. I agree.
Any other comments on Agenda Item number six? Okay. Agenda Item number seven. Want to make a comment on that. This is to rescind that resolution that canceled the revocation of the building license and the conditional use permit for teasers, but we're required by the court order to rescind that resolution. But if you would like to speak to it, you're welcome to, Mrs. Phillips.
Understanding, when I got this notice, that the Planning Commission was again considering reinstating this and going through the whole process that they went through. Is that true?
Mrs. Chair, member...
It didn't say anything about a rescission in the...
Members of the Commission, if I could go ahead and answer exactly what you...
Excuse me. You have to go a little slower.
I have to go what? Slower? I'm sorry. Okay, yes, I apologize. You did receive a notice. That notice was in error, and if and when the Planning Commission does decide to go through the process again, if that happens or when that happens, you will be re-notified. That item was totally pulled from the agenda. This, number seven, is a separate item. So, for example, if you received the notice for another revocation hearing, that item we cannot talk about at all tonight. It's not on our agenda whatsoever.
But that is what I did receive in the mail, wasn't it?
That is correct. You received that in the mail.
Okay.
And it was... If and when the Planning Commission does decide to go through a revocation process again, if that happens, you will be re-noticed, so you could come and talk then.
We've been here a few times.
Yes, I'm sure. I apologize for the inconvenience.
I don't know whether this is still in effect or not, but when this building was first opened and was given a conditional use permit because of the condos that run along the back, they serve food in two large portions of that building, at the Bun Boy and at the Wells Fargo. I'm not sure that they serve food in there, and I'm not sure that they're entitled to a conditional use permit within three hundred miles of housing unless they do serve food. And you guys must know those laws, and if somebody would tell me that they are operating under good authority, I would be much calmer about the whole thing.
Well, I think if it's okay with staff, that doesn't specifically speak to item number seven, so I assume that you're making a public comment about that. Maybe if you would call staff or get with staff even after the meeting, staff could help you out on that matter. I don't know it off the top of my head. I don't think the Commission knows it off the top of their head, but staff could definitely help you out. So, either wait till after the meeting or maybe give the planning department a call tomorrow.
I think we'll go home.
I'm sorry about the inconvenience. I apologize.
Well, as a citizen, I just don't see how a judge from San Bernardino can tell the city of Victorville how to run their businesses.
How do you think we feel?
I don't know, but if I was carrying heat... Nice to see you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not coming down?
I don't want to hear what I have to say.
Oh, sure.
Okay, let me just give you a few comments.
Sure.
You know, this during... Jim Phillips. And I'm a local resident. I'll just leave it at that. I think most of you know where I'm at. You know, it's really disturbing to have to see the debate go on and on and on. You guys have ordinances you pass, your staff works hard and makes recommendations, your deputies work hard, you pass laws to try to uphold them, and then some guy comes in and they put on a dog and pony show, and you don't stand up for the damn rules that you make, so you fall for whatever it is because... And maybe the rules are wrong. Maybe we're trying to over-legislate ourselves. You know, it's a good development, there's no question about it. But if you have the rules, let your yes be yes and your no be no, and then they can deal with it. You know, I run into it all the time, and so does Rob in our business. We bring good deals to the table, and we have to try to manipulate around all this legislation, all these rules. And I think it's a little bit of common sense. And, you know, it's frustrating to see you guys have to sit back here, and I couldn't do it. I applaud all you guys for your public service, okay? Don't get me wrong. I mean, you guys spent hours on hours hearing this testimony, but stand up for it. Back up your rules. If you're going to make those rules, there... Obviously, you want a certain look for Victorville. If you keep fudging and you keep trying to manipulate every little thing, you know what you end up with? Victorville. Or maybe not the Victorville you want. You know, you can create what you want, but if you're creating this project here and this project there and everything, then you're going to have this project there and that project. You're not going to have a planned community. So, I'm just an observation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item number seven.
Madam Chair, you said it pretty well. I think you said it pretty well. We're under court order to go ahead and rescind that the resolution is only one, right? That'd be that.
Well, I think they're adopting... Yeah, you're adopting that P fourteen dash zero fifteen in order to revoke the resolution.
I'll second it.
I'll make motion to adopt Resolution P dash fourteen dash zero one five, rescinding the revocation of DSL zero five dash zero seven three nine eight and CUP ninety-two dash zero four nine M.
Agenda Item number eight is presentation of reports by Commission members.
I have two things. One is I don't think I've ever seen a planning commission come in from another city and speak. Thirty-five, forty years I've been on the planning commission, I have never seen that done. I'm going to call his representative.
Is that good or bad?
It ain't going to be good, I'll tell you. The City of Victorville business license, I don't need that anymore, and I don't think the rest of the Commissions really care one way or the other because I asked for that.
I actually read it.
Okay, well, then, I'm sorry, then...
Yeah, I like to see it.
Okay. I don't need it anymore. If you want to... I still like to see the planning commission items that the administrative gets, but that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm good. I never thought I'd see the day that a real estate guy came before us and said, "Stick to your regulations, make it tough."
That was interesting.
Nothing else tonight?
And I'm going to close this meeting. Declare it adjourned.
This is a terrible meeting tonight.
It was.
Just a terrible meeting.